We'll call this special workshop meeting with the actual city council order. Council, as you places, you should have a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion to adopt that agenda.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. First item tonight is the Riverwalk Marina Concept Plans. Dr. Woodruff, if you want to introduce that, please.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Do that again. Evening, Mayor, members of council. At the last meeting, we presented to you three concepts with the asset you would study that and tonight come back to give us further direction. I would remind you that there are three opinions or options. This is the view from the water looking back towards the park. And you can see that on the front portion of each of the three options is a large seated area. On the back area of all three options, there are restrooms. It is important for us to select an option because, as you'll recall, some of the money coming to fund this project is coming from a FEMA alternative project. And they require us to have that finished by this coming September. We have received a little bit of an extension, but it's important for us to get the concept, the architect is ready to move post haste. When you look at the side view, you will notice that in option one, you can see on the first floor, the restrooms to the left, you can see the seating area to the right. There will also be a handicap ramp, which is not shown in any of the options. In order to hold down the length of the handicap ramp, the handicap ramp will actually come off of the existing boardwalk. And the reason why is the existing boardwalk is approximately two feet above ground elevation. So if you know the rule, every foot, 12 feet. So that's going to save us 24 feet of boardwalk. The real option or difference in all three options is the second story. Now, remember, in option one, two, and three, there's nothing in the second story other than open space. Here is option two. It looks very similar to option one from the front view. However, from the side view, you can see that it is much smaller on the second floor. It will also be less expensive to build. And when you're standing directly under the second floor, you'll be able to actually look all the way up through the structure and see the timbers. So it's going to be very attractive. Likewise, the area over the seating area will be open with open beams. And then the third option is exactly like the second option, except at the very top, you will notice that the cupola area is open. And like option one, the cupola area covers the entire area. What we're asking tonight, and I'll go back very quickly, is for you to select option one. Sorry, wrong finger, wrong button. Option one. Option two. Option three. Jerry Bittner, Councilmember Bittner, pointed out that in the previous renditions, we tried to rename the city. So you will notice in all of these renditions, we have correctly, or at least I believe we have, yep, Jacksonville is back correctly spelled. What direction do you as a council provide?
Question. Go to a side view, doesn't matter which option. Which way is the water?
Water, in this case, is to our right.
Okay. That's what I was hoping, that I was hoping the water is to the right so that we had more viewing area on the water side than on the land side.
Yes, sir. In all cases, the whole purpose of this is for it to be an area where people can come and sit in rocking chairs. And you will recall that in all of them, you'll see the ceiling fans. So in all three cases, you will have a very nice seating area facing the marina.
Will the repeating tables and all that stuff underneath there?
No, sir. What the plan is for the park itself is that out, so you're now facing the the structure with the water to your rear. To the right-hand side is the open field area. And in that area, we plan on putting three or four picnic shelters, not large, but rather something where eight people max could sit. And we plan on having, if you remember the master plan, a walkway through there and grass and landscaping. We do not intend to use the, or that's the master plan recommendation, but y'all haven't adopted it yet, is that everything from the edge of this building all the way off the property would simply be open space for people to come and have a picnic, lay blankets, or sit on the shelters. But on this part, it would strictly be rocking chairs.
Got it.
I'm ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to hear one.
Mr. Ward. I recommend make a motion that we approve option two. I like the massing of it. I think it has a little more proportional to me.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion or input? Here none, all in favor of option two? Say aye. All opposed? So option two is the decision of the council.
Thank you very much. This evening, as we begin the budget, we'd like to introduce a young lady who you may have met before. Randa has been with the city for almost a year and a half? Okay. She is part of Wally's excellent engineering staff, comes with a military background. And Wally and Randa are going to be actually submitted, let's do that again. Wally and Randa are going to be presenting the overview of the capital improvement program this evening. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. With your agenda and budget book, you should have a copy of the draft, 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan. Tonight, Randan and I will kind of discuss that draft. We're really going to focus on just an overview of what the capital improvement plan is, what constitutes a capital project. And really what we're going to focus on are reoccurring programs that we have set up that you see every year or every other year in the capital improvement plan. And then the new projects for funding in FY '22, because that will be the year that is funded as part of your budget process. In addition, we have other projects that are in fiscal year '22, but many of those are actually carryovers from this current year that we're in. If you recall, we've delayed starting multiple projects this year. We did that because we were concerned about revenue from COVID. We have most of the projects that we delayed now, at least in planning or design, so we are a little bit delayed on some of those projects. So you may see a project that has expenditures in '22, but it's funded in a prior year, and that prior year would be the current budget year that we're in. So we're really not going to discuss those projects. You've seen those projects multiple times. What we're really going to do is focus on those new projects for FY '22, because that's what you will be approving as part of your, of the budget process. So with that, the capital improvement plan is really a 10-year plan where we look at not only parks and recreation programs, street repaving, sidewalks, stormwater improvements that are needed, water and sewer projects. And we'll show you in just a few minutes about how those projects break out by department. Our plan is updated annually. We revise it annually. As I mentioned, only the first year is funded. The other nine years are really for planning purposes. If you go back through previous capital improvement plans, you'll see that we do add project, add new projects periodically, but the bulk of those projects really stay the same. And then we adjust the the funding year of those projects to match either development pressure that we're seeing or revenue sources that are available, or council priorities through your adopted plans, such as your Parkmaster Plan that Dr. Woodruff mentioned. We use the capital improvement plan, especially in water and sewer, to set our rates. We have a 10-year rate model that goes along with our 10-year capital improvement plan. And we have our system development fee model, which, as you'll recall, system development fees are those fees that developer pay as they construct new, you know, buildings or homes and as they tie into our water and sewer system. But those projects that are identified in the capital improvement plan is what we use to plan our rates and to set our system development fees. As I mentioned, we really focus on financial planning with our capital improvement plan, while some of those projects may shift from year to year. And we periodically update those, you know, the purpose is that we are now looking, you know, 10 years into the future so that we can appropriate, plan, and prioritize. And then we use that to appropriately schedule and use staff time to manage those projects. And we really put the most emphasis on, like I mentioned, that first year that will be funded and then the year shortly following, because those are, those are the years that, you know, we really look for city investment. To be a capital improvement project, a project really needs to take roughly 12 months or more to construct. The cost has to exceed $50,000. That includes, you know, all costs, including survey, design, land or right-of-way that we might have to acquire, or even construction cost. You know, we don't include if we have to go out and dig up a street just to replace, to make one repair. That may be an expensive repair, but it's really not a capital project. We're really looking at something that of value, but we're not looking at, you know, computer equipment or fleets such as dump trucks or pickup trucks or equipment, you know, our backhoes or excavators. So really, we're talking construction-type projects and improvements. And then, as you're looking at the capital improvement plan in the top, you'll see that there are several designations. We have everything from new construction to replacement to rehabilitation to improvement and then growth. The only thing I'd really like to highlight with our improvement and growth projects, especially in the water and sewer, that's probably where you'll primarily see those projects. If it's an improvement project, it would have revenue supported from both user fees, which are those monthly fees that our ratepayers pay every month for their usage, as well as growth, because improvement projects accommodate future growth. So if we're going to go in and just for simple explanation, if we're going to, we need to rehab a sewer line, but it's in a basin that could continue to grow, if that existing sewer line is an eight-inch, but we determine, you know, over the next 15 years, we're really going to need a 12-inch, then what we'll do is we'll replace that eight-inch with a 12-inch line. And then, basically, the additional cost above the eight-inch is calculated into our system development fees. And then with growth, 100% of that does go into our system development fee calculation. So those, you know, while it may not be quite as important when you're talking about, you know, the recreation or streets portion, that, those categories are really important when we're talking about water and sewer projects. Here's the total projects by department over the 10 years. You can see that there's 132 projects. That is a lot of projects. Many of these are actually in reoccurring programs that Rand is going to discuss with you. But you can see the bulk of those projects fall under public services. And the reason that the bulk of those projects fall under public services is because that's where our infrastructure really is housed. So any of the water sewer projects, the street projects, the sidewalk projects, stormwater projects, all fall under public services. And then on top of that, we also have projects such as roof replacements, where that may be a recreation roof, or it may be a city hall roof. And instead of trying to plug those into each individual department, we've just created a general program and included it under public services. And that's because engineering is really the ones that will manage and administer that project with guidance from our facilities maintenance services group. So here's the 10 years of capital projects broke out by funding sources. Again, you'll see the bulk of that is primarily water and sewer projects. We do have revenue bonds that would be related to the Western Regional Sewer System that we're moving forward with now. And then your PAL bill, which covers streets and sidewalks. And then we get into installment purchase, which is, you know, those are where, that's where our finance department goes out for loans to support those projects. Then we have some other smaller funding that we receive. So tonight, as we get into the projects, Rand is really going to cover the projects. She is the one that is behind the capital improvement plan. She has done all of the heavy lifting. She takes all of the departmental requests, puts those together, seeks assistance in putting together some of the estimates that are required as we receive those requests. And then as we move forward with finance and manager review, she's the one that's responsible for coming back and making all of those changes to the individual projects. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to her and let her talk to you about some of our programs and projects. And like I said, really, her primary, primary focus is going to be on those new projects for FY '22.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Let me apologize now if I fumble, so figured I'd get that out of the way. As Wally mentioned, there's 132 projects in this 10-year span for the FY '22 to FY '31 CIP. The Neighborhood Improvement Services, they have one of those. It's actually already funded, so, and I think that's out a little bit later, but it is in there. They just have the one. Our Public Safety Department, they have seven, three of which are with the Police Department, four of which, oh, four of which are with the Fire Department. None of these are new and in this fiscal year budget that we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Council, if you're looking, your books at page 18, and that should be, if you're on your computer, it's in the same number. You'll be able to follow along so that, as Rand points out, the numbers, for example, you'll notice in police and fire, you can see under fire, there are four projects, and you can see what the details of those projects are. So please.
Be here. And then, public services. Wally's already mentioned that public services has the bulk of the capital improvement plan again, because they oversee all the infrastructure. So, you know, that's the water, sewer, sidewalk, all of that. Part of this also includes our inflow and infiltration program. This program, it occurs every three years. This allows us to identify the areas that need those repairs. And then it, it goes on to design and then construction. These repairs include, it could either be CIPP lining or cured-in-place piping, but these repairs and lining are to reduce the infiltration of groundwater as well as reduce inflow of stormwater. It's an ongoing maintenance, but again, it's every three years, and it allows us to identify areas. And even when we've already begun design of some of our projects, we'll add in if we find something that's newer or that needs repaired ASAP, we can incorporate that into one of them. Again, the, this one is the FY '22, FY '23. It only covers the two because the two fiscal years, it has a break in between, and that's for the time that we're looking for areas that need repair. Again, this is a reoccurring program. It covers our cured-in-place piping, manhole repairs and coating, and it is funded through our sewer fund. Our water and sewer rehab projects, these, again, are reoccurring projects to replace aging infrastructure. We focus on high-maintenance areas to reduce operational expenditures. We also work with our streets department. Obviously, we don't want to go in there and make a large repair to one of the infrastructures only to find out we need to, we just repaved the road. So we make sure that we work with them to keep our costs down. The pedestrian improvement program, this focuses on installing sidewalk trails and ADA improvements. We, this occurs every year, and a matter of fact, we have the FY '22 pedestrian improvement. And this is funded through the PAL bill. We, it includes, again, installing sidewalks and trails, the route and seal of existing sidewalks, and of course, ADA improvements. Our street rehabilitation program, this is another reoccurring project. We focus on improving the street structures as well as the ride ability of this. It, we do this by developing and prioritizing a list, but it's based on approved PAL bill streets. The annual appropriation for this is $830,000. With this money, we try to resurface around three and a half to four miles of streets. And again, that's, those are PAL bill streets that we focus on.
Rand, if I could before you.
Yep.
Just as an update to city council, I actually have the, if you recall, you added $1 million to the street repaving project. I actually have that project on my desk in final review, so that should be out within the next two weeks for bid. So that project will be beginning sometime this summer.
One of the clarification on the street, when we say we're going to resurface a street, that is not from pillar to post. It's segments of streets. So for example, several years ago, we resurfaced a portion of Doris. And I know many of you live up there in the Northwoods area. We did not resurface the entire street. If we had resurfaced the entire street, it would have taken more money than your entire paving budget for that one street. So again, it's, while we talk about we're going to resurface, pick a number 20 streets, it's actually segments of streets. And depending on the cost, sometimes we get as little as two miles coverage, and sometimes we get three to three and a half miles of coverage.
And we do have a street paving project out there right now. Contractors are working. They just finished three streets in Foxhorn Village. They've been on Carolina Forest Boulevard, and I'm not sure there's several others.
And then we have another, yes, yeah. And that one includes, there's about, I believe it's about nine different streets within the city. They'll start that. They're working on the curb and gutter and sidewalks right now. And then they'll start the actual street repaving next week. And again, the FY '22 street rehab, that's in this fiscal year, and it's part of the reoccurring program. Something we do, for instance, when we get calls from citizens about certain areas, we'll go out there. Because I have several of the street repaving projects, they usually get diverted to me, but we'll go out there and look at the areas and make sure, you know, one of the streets that was supposed to be done, we found out that there was significant infrastructure repairs needed. So obviously, we can't repave that street when we know we're going to have to go in there and repay, you know, repair the sewer or the water line. So we're doing that first. But those are things we try to do, make sure that we're keeping up with everything and looking at the different areas that are in need. Our well rehabilitation program, this program began last year. It, it addresses city well sites that are, that were constructed back in the 60s and 70s. And the estimated cost is that, I don't think that's per well, it's $250,000, but...
Yeah, it is per well.
Per well, okay, so. But this began last year, and this will be a reoccurring project as well. Coal Drive Infrastructure, I believe this is one that's been in front of the council before. This is a new project for FY '22, and this is one of those areas that, you know, we were going to repave only to find out that there's issues with the infrastructure. So we have from Hargett Street to Armstrong Drive, it's both the water and sewer lines that we'll repair. And then after we're done, we'll go in there and repave that, that segment of the street. This project will be funded through water and sewer as well as PAL bill as the repaving is done. The SCADA improvements at the water treatment plant, this, let's see here, this enables, trying to remember here, this resulted from a past failure of some of the SCADA equipment, which we were down for about half the day.
We lost, we had to shut the water treatment plant down for a full afternoon because we lost all control of our, all remote, I should say, remote control of the plant itself and the well sites. So everything is, you know, all 35 well sites are controlled from the plant control room as well as the plant itself. And something happened with a fiber connection, and when it flipped over to the redundant path, there was issues with the SCADA control panel itself, and we were unable to control anything remotely. It was, we had, all of our tanks were full, so we had sufficient water storage. So it was pretty easy to just shut our wells down and shut our tank down, our plant down and make the repair. But what I will say is, our crews are fully capable of running the plant manually, as well as the wells manually, but as you can imagine, that takes a large number of staff. So it was just easier to shut it down, make the repairs, and then bring staff in. Part of the challenge is you, that picture looks really small. That cabinet is larger than I, I could get inside of that cabinet pretty comfortably. And it's, as you can see, there's tons of wires and about 100 different, for lack of a better term, modules that, you know, receive information in and then send information out. And those modules are no longer built. You know, that cabinet's about 11 years old. We have some that are available, but now the modules they make don't fit in the same size area. So it's not like we can just do a one-for-one swap. We have to do everything at once, unfortunately.
Explain what SCADA means.
I wish I knew the acronym. It's basically the control interface for the user. It essentially looks like a pretty graphic that tells you, you know, gives you a picture of the water tower and shows you what the water level is, but really, it's, it's the command functions behind measuring the water level, you know, graphically representing it, telling pumps to turn on and turn off. And I apologize, I, we've used the term SCADA for so long, I'm not even sure that I could tell you what the acronym stands for.
System Control.
According to our attorney.
Googled.
Google.
Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition.
There you go.
Is basically the brains that run our water operation.
It is that. So, and that, and that's the human interface portion. That's what we interface with to tell, you know, a pump to turn on, and it turns on, and it says that it's running.
Okay. All right, so again, that project, that's one of our new ones for this year.
And I'll do this one, too.
As well as, okay, go ahead.
And this project is also new. One of the, one of the things that we... One of the, one of the things that we realized, that I know many of you have been to the tour of the water treatment plant. But we have different levels of filtration. The first stage are the canister filters you see in the picture. And really what that's for is to remove just sand and suspended solids that are in the water as it's pumped in. You know, we, all of our water comes from deep underground wells. Well, those are in sandy confined aquifers. So it's not uncommon to have sand come in, into the well and then pumped to the plant. So what these cartridge filters do are kind of remove that sand before it goes to the, the final level in treatment. Well, if you recall, we do not treat 100% of the water that comes to the plant. We actually bypass about 10% of it. And we do that primarily for taste. It's still high quality water that's coming to the plant, but we really, we really treat for organics and for odor. But if you remove everything that's coming from it, it's almost like distilled water. So we actually bypass 10% of our water primarily for taste and smell. Well, what we realized is that bypass water goes directly to the mixing tank where we feed chemicals and the treated water comes from the trains. What we realized is there's really no filtration on that bypass line to take out the sand and suspended solids. So what we've realized is that is making it to our mixing tank, which means at some point, we're going to have to drain that tank, go in and clean that out. Well, if we put cartridge filters on that bypass line and intercept that water and just run it through the cartridge filters, we can take the majority of that out. So this is a project to come back and retrofit and add cartridge filters into that bypass water line.
For our Recreation and Parks Department, they have 25 of 132 projects that are in this 10-year span, one of which is new in FY22. And that is the playground improvements for Jacksonville Commons. This includes upgrades to the rubber A's surface, updating the equipment as well as ADA improvements. And the plan is to construct it in FY22. And our Transportation Services Department, they have a total of 15. 10 of these 15 projects are actually our fiber installation program. This is where we go in there, we go around and install fiber in areas throughout the city. This is, the whole purpose of this is to reduce dependency on the least fiber that we have. Obviously, that will help us save money down the road. But it's also to improve connection, speed and reliability throughout city infrastructures. This is, this is grant, or this is funded through, 50,000 of it is through the general fund and the other 50,000 is through water and sewer. And again, FY22 fiber installation, we do the design and construction in this fiscal year.
So the, I know we only touched on what feels like a few of the 132 projects. But really what we've been trying to work toward over the last several years is really focus on managing the infrastructure that we have and, you know, keeping it up to date and rehabilitate it as needed. And, you know, part of that focus is to get the projects into programs. So while Randa talked about six or seven programs that we have in place, those probably cover more than 40 or 50 of the actual projects that show up in your capital improvement plan. And a prime example is the, the fiber project reoccurs every year for the next 10 years. So that's 10 automatic projects. Same with the street repaving and the, the sidewalks. And those, while the, the fiber project is new last year, I believe, as a reoccurring program, the, the streets and sidewalks has been an ongoing program since 2007 when we started the capital improvement plan. So has water and sewer line replacements. And while they, they're not really identified as program, what you'll see is individual streets or, or sections of streets such as Branchwood, where we are doing water and sewer rehabilitation. That's not growth related. Those are just projects primarily geared toward rehabbing or rehabilitating our existing infrastructure and, you know, trying to lower our operation and maintenance costs. Because it is cheaper for us in an area where we know that we have reoccurring problems to go in and make a capital investment in that versus having to go out and repair those in the middle of the night. You know, if, if we're repairing something in the middle of the night, especially if we have to be a, bring a contractor in, those things happen, but they're very costly. If you'll recall, four or five years ago, we had what we called the big dig out at the Marsh Oaks area off of Corbin Road. You know, the final bill for us going in and solving, I think it was about 30 linear feet of sewer, cost us over $300,000 total, if I remember correctly. Because it was 20 feet in the ground or 25 feet in the ground. What we've got now is a better program of trying to go through and identify areas that are beginning to fail and then making improvements. For example, if we catch a sewer line before it collapses, we can go through with our INI project and line that and it's almost like a new pipe inside. Or it is a new pipe inside in, in most cases. So we've done a, we've done a very good job of trying to get a lot of our infrastructure into ongoing programs. That helps us flatten the cost over the, the period that we're looking at. And it helps us to keep up and appropriately manage our funds and plan for our rates. In addition, there's seven new projects that are proposed for funding. Those are the ones that Randa highlighted specifically in the FY22 program. Otherwise, the other projects are projects that are, for most purposes, already begun. You know, we had planning or design in previous years with construction to begin either the current fiscal year we're in, in 21 or in 22. But either way, that was a project that we had already begun. So we're really trying, we really tonight wanted to focus on those projects that you will be adopting as part of your budget. So in summary, again, of the 10 years, the first year is the only year that is actually funded. We use the remaining nine years for planning. Those projects can move around and projects can be added in. A great example of that is where we have a, a project like Coal Drive. It's one that, it went bad very quickly. So, and, you know, I think I told the Water and Sewer Advisory Board, our patches have patches now in the first block of Coal Drive. So that is a, you know, when we have failures like that that begin to fail very quickly, those are projects that, you know, creep up on us that we weren't necessarily planning for. But there is a benefit to getting that into the capital improvement plan. You can capitalize those projects. Again, the capital improvement plan supports not only rehabilitation of, of infrastructure, it supports new construction and it supports growth-related projects. As well as looking at and planning for projects like the marina that we talked about tonight where you have master plans for your parks. And we can appropriate plan for those and, and follow those master plans. The capital improvement plan, at least for the water and sewer portion, we have run through the rate model for FY22. It is financially supportable based on our rate model and our system development fee model. And the water and sewer portion has been to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee over the last two meetings. And they recommended support of those water and sewer projects in the capital improvement plan to you for support. So with that, as we move forward, we will be happy to look at any projects. If you feel that there's a, a scope or description that needs to be modified or evaluated, if there's a timing that we need to look at for certain projects, we can certainly do that and bring that back to you. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Let me make a couple of additional comments. First of all, Randa, nicely done. As a Marine, you're always ready, so very, very well done. I know that Mr. Sosa has been, is the newest person on the block, so I'm going to take a little moment to talk about the book itself. If you'll look at page 18 and 19, which I referred to before, on page 18, you'll notice under fire, the fire training ground, and you'll notice $50,000 each year. In your book, now flip over to page 35, which is the first page under the tab of fire. You will notice in that case, there is an explanation of the project. And then you will also see, as Randa pointed out, any prior funding. In that case, it was for planning and preliminary design. And then you will see a proposed construction schedule. And then at the very bottom, you will see a funding proposal, which is general fund. So as you go through pages 18 and 19 and 20 and 21, 22, where all of the projects are laid out, you will find further in the book under each tab for each department or segment, the actual details of that capital improvement program. Now, there are a couple that I would like to, to point out. Let's go back to the fire training grounds. Several years ago, the city was the only one putting money in the fire training ground. And you'll recall, we stopped that. The agreement with the college and with the county is for every dollar the city puts in, they put in two. So we're not going to get back into the situation where the city is the one building everything and all the fire departments throughout the county are using it with no expense. As you also go down the list, I'm going to point out to you just a couple of other projects. And I want to, I'm going to use this as an example. Pedestrians, on page 19, you will see $100,000 for every year for the next 10 years. That does not actually mean, and I want to stress what Wally said, the only thing, you know, a month from now, when you adopt the budget, the only thing you're adopting is the 22 column. So as you review this, if there is something that is in a 23, 24, 25, whatever, column, and you think it needs to be, you would not think, you believe that the community needs that earlier, then what we ask you to do is point out, point that out to us. So, you know, through a memo, and then we can discuss that as we have additional budget workshops. The other point that I'll make on the sidewalks is this. If you decide that instead of spending $100,000 a year for sidewalks, that for one or two years, you want that 100,000 to go to paving, that's for you to tell us. Because what we know is, while we get some complaints about sidewalks, I think we get a whole lot more complaints about paving. So as you look at the book, you know, those are the type things that we need for you to be telling us. Let me move to two other pages. Look at page 21. Under Recreation and Parks, you will notice that $100,000 is coming for playground improvements at Jacksonville Commons. You will find over under Recreation, a detailed page that talks about that project. And you will see where the money comes from. That is page which?
141.
Page 141. Thank you, Wally. Turn back to page 141. If I can make my fingers work. And that word was fangers, not fingers. If you'll notice, on page 141, it talks about the $100,000 for Jacksonville Commons. Where's the funding? From the Capital Reserve Fund. We commonly refer to that as your four cent initiative. Again, as you look at that, if you should decide that the splash pad at the Commons is more important than the playground at the Commons, we're open for discussion. These priorities have been given to you with input in almost all cases at the preference of the department directors. Certainly, I manipulate these numbers around, as does Gail, to try to balance your books. But this is how you use this book. They did a great job of explaining a capital improvement program. Here is where the real budget details get into what your job is. And that is to look at all of these and to say, no, instead of being funded in 23, I want to find a one, a way to fund it in 22. And then the last comment that I'll make back on page 21 is the Jack Ham Yet Recreation If you'll notice on page 21, we have in there $3.6 million. But if you look back in the detailed pages, which is page 148, well, you're good, I appreciate that. you will notice that we've already expended a substantial amount of money. Why? Tearing it down, paying for architectural and engineering services. The other part that you will notice there on page 148 is that the general fund, and that's really not the general fund, that's the four cent initiative. And I'll come back and explain why it is the general fund, but it isn't the general fund in a minute. I know that sounds like budgeting double talk, and I guess it is. The other funding source, Anthony was very successful in leading a team effort that resulted in a $1 million grant to offset some of that cost. So that's where that $1 million comes in. And then you'll also see the insurance proceeds. There is where Gail and her staff worked magic with our insurance carrier and was able to get a very nice settlement for the damage by Hurricane Florence. There's a lot of details in these pages. I know most of you are used to studying them, but this is a refresher course for all of us. The other part is the design work on Jack Ham Yet is now finished. It is being shipped out to the federal government because they have to review all the plans. We hope to have a review back from them, Anthony. You have a projection? So hopefully, that project will be out for bid by June.
May.
May?
Is what we're shooting for, yes.
Okay. Now, again, let's go back and talk about what I said about the four cent initiative versus the general fund. What we've talked with you about before is not getting into long-term debt on any of these projects, other than water and sewer. So on the Jack Ham Yet project, the proposal which we have given to you, which you concurred in, but at any time you can modify, is that the general fund balance, which you're going to see in a few minutes, is going to loan this project all the money is needed to pay the balance. Whatever's left after insurance money and the grant money, whatever the bid comes in, the general fund reserve or savings account is going to loan this project that money. And then over the next four years, five years max, we will use the four cent reserve to pay the general fund balance back. What does that mean? If you only get 1.4 million out of the four cent initiative, and let's say you're paying back 3.5 million, let's say you do that over five years, since my math would be simple that way. Five goes into 300 and, or 3.5 million. Mr. Thomas, how many times?
Seven.
Thank you very much. That was my math, but I was afraid to state it. So what you're looking at is taking. So what you're looking at is taking over half, or roughly half, of your four cent initiative to pay this debt. Also, remember, you already have other obligations for that four cent reserve, such as paying for the 800 megahertz system for two more years. So at the end of the day, you will notice that general fund projects are, in this budget, pretty skinny. And the reason why is, we're trying to pay as we go and not get into debt. That's the overview of your capital improvement program. What we ask you all to do now is, over the next several weeks, really go through this. You know, Water and Sewer Advisory Board does a great job. And I know, Mr. Thomas, of course, I believe you were on that for a while, Mr. Sosa. The places where we really need your input are primarily what I call the quality of life items. And that's those things that are in parks and recreation and the things that are not funded by Water and Sewer. That was a lot of information we've unloaded on. You've been very kind. What questions do you have of us on how we're gonna move forward and review this? Please, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions, sir. It was mentioned that the, that possibly the Jack Hammett is going to be ready to receive bids for that new construction project that's gonna take place. So just for the listening audience, can you just briefly summarize? Can you just briefly summarize the bidding, or the bidding process, how that works, and why that's important?
Okay. Well, first of all, by state law, any thresholds that are over a certain level, we're required to get competitive bids. And what we do is, we pre-qualify bidders. So we will send out, when we're ready to move forward with the bidding process, we will send out an invitation for companies to give us their overview of their qualifications. That will guarantee that we don't wind up with, you know, Richard Woodruff, who just decided to get into the construction business, trying to build a $5 million facility for $1 million. So we pre-qualify. Once we pre-qualified, then what we do is go through the formal bid process of sending out advertisements. We send out the full specifications as prepared by the, by the engineers and architects that we've hired. They're placed in the format that we usually use. And insurance requirements and references must be also responded to. So when the bids come back in, we know that we pick up a number. We got five bids, that they range from this point to some other point, that everyone who has bid was pre-qualified and capable of doing the work, and that they have, in fact, good references, which we check, and that they have the insurance and the background to do the job. Once that occurs, then the staff finishes reviewing of all of the components. Why is that important? Quite often, a contractor in, because it's not just a lump sum. We require itemized statements. A lot of times, in the mobilization, someone will put a cost, but his competitor will put that cost in a different line item. So what we do is go through and make sure that everything matches up. Quite often, when we talk to someone, and they will actually say, well, guess what? Somewhere along the line, we didn't put that in our bid. Well, guess what? That just disqualified that bidder. Eventually, the bids come to the mayor and council for award. Once the award is made, then we get into the formal contract documents. So let's use a theoretical timeline. Let's suppose that in May, we are able to get the bids out the door. A project of this size, you do not ask a contractor to do this in two weeks. Mr. Warden, from your background, project of roughly $5 million, a huge gym like this, what's a normal time for a contractor to need to respond?
Anywhere from three to four weeks.
Okay. So we normally give, you know, five weeks. One thing Mr. Warden has also taught us over the years, there are certain days of the week you want to bid in. There are certain days of the week you don't want to ask them to get a bid in. Correct, sir? What's the preferential day for receiving bids?
Usually, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is much, much preferred over a Monday, Friday.
Correct. So we've used his guidance on doing that. Once the bids come in, once you award them, then we go through the process of all the contracts. So if we get the bids out in May, hopefully, we have the bids before you in June, maybe late June. And by the time you award them, we do everything, notice to proceed, we will be very fortunate to have that project started by late September. And it is probably a 14-month project. So, you know, it, magic doesn't, doesn't happen. Magic is hard work.
Okay. Now, based upon that, over the last five years with major constructions that have occurred in the city of Jacksonville, what percentage would you say went to contractors that was located right here in Onslow County?
Actually, I have no idea of that, but we'll be happy to look. What I can tell you is that smaller projects, like the bathrooms that we built, every one of those has gone to a local contractor, but I will verify that. On the other hand, a very large project, you know, such as the Jack Hammett Building, it will be very surprising if we have any local contractors. But we'll be happy to go back and do some research.
Okay. And while you're at it, when you get the information, ascertain the information for Onslow County, and then what percentage of large contracting bids are going out to other counties or possibly other states that might be coming in and working on our projects? Because the reason that I'm asking is that I'm thinking in our COVID, in this season of COVID, that many jobs, many businesses has been affected. And one of my other questions is going to be that, with bids that are awarded, how many of our bids are actually being awarded to minority businesses, whether they're in Onslow County or outside of Onslow County? And how we are generating those particular businesses in Onslow County to bring economic development, to help to reduce our unemployment that we currently have in, currently in this county? So if you can find out that information also, I would greatly appreciate it.
Normally, our budget notes are returned to you in, in the normal season, in two or three days. Obviously, these notes are going to take a little bit longer, but we'll make this a priority.
Okay. And then my final question. When bids are awarded, is there anything within the city of Jacksonville policy that a certain percentage of that contractor's jobs are awarded to citizens that live here in Jacksonville to help stimulate economic development, to reduce unemployment? Are we asking those companies to consider hiring or allocating a certain number of their workers to be citizens of the city of Jacksonville since they're coming into our city and building these infrastructures that the citizens will ultimately be using? Is there, is there anything that we set aside to help our citizens with gainful employment? With contracting, more often, is seasonal, as opposed to being something permanent. So are we helping our citizens in that aspect of employment?
No. We do not have anything in our purchasing policies, and I believe that there are issues in the state law with that, but we will look at that. But I can tell you, there's nothing in our purchasing policies that requires a contractor to be local. There's nothing in our current policies that require a contractor to hire people locally.
We do have minority business participation, though. Every bid that we send out, every bid that we send out over, I think it's $50,000, requires minority participation. And basically, they have two options, an affidavit that says, either they're gonna do it with their own workforce, which means they are not hiring any subs. Or if they do hire subs, then they have, there's basically a checklist that they have to go through, and they have to obtain a certain amount of points. And our goal is 10% minority participation on all contracts.
But again, we do not require any of those to be city of Jacksonville residents or Onslow County residents.
And we've looked at that before. There's statutory problems with doing that.
Mr. Carter, would you please review the statutory requirements as far as bidding on municipal projects and get back with us?
I think Mr. Hanson has accurately set that forth. The only thing that I haven't heard mentioned to answer Dr. Washington's questions is, is that you have to have on these larger projects such as this, you have to have at least three bids. If you don't have three bids, then you have to rebid it. When you rebid it, even if you get one bid, then that's adequate. But again, you have to do that. And we just had that. I was talking to Christie Bston. She's working with us on the Decatur Pump Station. As you recall, we're trying to abandon that pump station there, but the dip in the road there, Decatur, and it was bid out, and we only got two bids back. That's not sufficient. So we gotta go back. And even if we just get one bid, we're okay. She thinks we got about four other folks. But again, you have to have a certain number of folks, or you have to have it rebid.
With state law, under state statutes, would it prohibit us from restricting bidders on projects?
As far as, when, and Dr. Woodruff here has been the business, but I believe, you know, when you, when you actually, a large company comes in, like out of Charlotte or different places, they're going to look to your local community to find some labors. Mr. Warden can actually talk to this better than I can. But again, they may have some folks that they've used in their projects over in the Piedmont area of the state. And they say, doesn't matter if you've got local drywall workers or, or et cetera. We want Johnny over here from Monroe or whatever that we've used and continuing, and we will put them up in the local hotels, et cetera, and so forth. So there's, there's different ways. But again, as everyone has already said around the table, other than this minority participation, which Wally has covered perfectly, you cannot tell a contractor, you have to hire folks from Jacksonville or Onslow County. Mr. Warden?
Yeah, we actually bid a project at Fayetteville, a city hall renovation. We were low, and the city council actually decided to throw out all bids. And we found out later that it was because we were a non-Fayetteville firm. Legally, they couldn't throw us out because of that, but they decided just, they couldn't say, no, pro-construction, you're out. We're gonna go to the next guy, because he's a local guy. They just threw out all bids, had to re-advertise. Embarrassed the architect greatly, because that's, they're not allowed to discriminate against. If you hold a North Carolina general contractor's license, under state law, you're allowed to bid on these projects. To Wally's point about the minorities, the general contractors are required to make a good faith effort in trying to meet that, whatever goal that's stated. If the city, that they have latitude, the cities and municipalities can choose a range of minority participation. If they say 10%, then we have to advertise in certain minority publications. We have to reach out to certain minority groups in order to show that we've made a good faith effort. We can also advertise in, you know, newspapers or whatever, and we always had to do that. And then, as you say, we had to document phone calls. We had to, we couldn't just advertise. We also had to send out invitations and follow up with phone calls. We had to have a log showing who we talked to, the date, and so forth. And so that gets reviewed by the architect and the, and the owner, whoever the owner might be, in this case, the city. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's, the minority participation is not something that is taken lightly by general contractors. It is part of their marketing effort in, in receiving bids, and it's an important part of what we do. So it's built into the DNA of that, that marketing and estimating company to, a group within that company to go out and, and actually find those minorities. And, and there are quite a few, not, it depends on the, it depends on the, the trade as to how much minority participation is out there. But some, some, some projects are easier than others to get minority participation, just depending on the, on the type of work. There are not many minority electrical contractors, for example, but there might be, there's quite a few minority drywallers. A lot of the, a lot of Indians from, from the Lumberton area are, are participating in that. So it just depends on the type of work, so.
I remember when Huberman and Grant, former mayor of Charlotte, Harvey Gant Construction Company helped with the, the Public Safety Building. And it's just a beautiful building. And I was, I was just thinking, if there are other minority companies out there that might be east of, or actually west of I-40, that really doesn't come this way, just thinking about how to generate and bring those minority businesses in, helping them to, to maybe just step out on faith that start applying for other areas, even though they may be a very small company, but still the initiative of just taking part in the bidding process, so.
I have one little, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to add, one of the things that we do on every contract that we send out for, whether it's a request for qualifications, whether that's engineering, architectural survey work, a request for bids in construction work, or a request for proposal, which would be services such as forestry management and other things that don't fall under those areas, we actually, our contract specialist searches a database of qualified minority contractors. And what she does is, she goes through and selects every area that is applicable, and it automatically generates a mailing list. And they get the advertisement directly. And it, you know, for a project like Jack Hammett, it'll include all of the subcategories such as site work, drywall work, framing, concrete. And so we, we break it down as, into as small groups as we can get it, and then we send it out. And then one other thing, just as a side note, I've been in engineering for over 10 years, now, the engineering division, for over 10 years now. And one of the things that we do is, once we get a good contractor, especially a minority contractor that we work really well with, we make sure they get the direct advertisement from, an invitation from the project manager. And an example of one that's being done right now is Riverwalk Park. That one's actually, if I, if I'm correct, it's being done by Milfed, which is Miss Life Height. So, which is a minority firm. And we got tied in with their company on the Jacksonville Transit Station. So, once we build that, another one we've used a lot for site work or, or infrastructure work for a while was East Coast Contracting. That was minority-owned. So, once we build that relationship, we continue to seek work. And a lot of times, it depends on their availability because they're sought after so hard because they fall in that group.
One other comment, on the, on a Jack Hammett, a million dollars federal money. Do you know whether Davis Bacon rules are gonna be required on that one? Good. Okay, okay. It has to do with the, the wages and compensation that you pay various trades. Now, one distinction between federal work and, and state work is state, you can show good faith efforts. State would be municipalities or working directly for the state. If you, if you bid on a federal government project, and they were, they have the percentages in there, you are required to show proof that you are utilizing 15% minority work. And if you don't, you can be penalized. If you, if you finish a project and you do not support the fact that you said you were gonna do 15%, then you can be penalized on the backside. So that is a big difference between state work and, and federal work.
Before we leave, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to add to what Wally said in regards to the, the local people, you know, like any of the local construction. When I send out for a bid, and Christie does the same, and we kind of discuss any local contractors, whether it's in the county or the city, Wand, our contract specialist, sends all the hub, the minority businesses, all that out, and she copies us on it as a project manager. For me, I have contractors that I know are local, that have bid on projects before. I keep a list, and I make sure to send those out, just in case, because sometimes they don't have access to bid.
out, just in case, because sometimes they don't have access to BidNet or wherever they're at. So I send them out when they're local ones. But those are things we do to try to make sure we're keeping them up to date on any new projects that maybe they might wanna bid. I know it's not a lot, but we're really big about that, so.
How do you generally advertise?
So for a project like Jack Emmett, we would do, after the plans and specs are all put together and ready to go out for advertisement, our contract specialist would post it. We would do that project for a minimum of 30 days. Five or six weeks is probably more realistic on a project of that size. And then we sit down with the contract specialist and try to break out every sub that would be, you know, every type of subcontract that could be used on a project of that size. And then we target those for interest and then minority business opportunities. And then, as a project manager, what we do is look at projects that we've had that were successful in the past with contractors that have done similar work, and then we would go to them directly also. And the, and the contract specialist posts it for everybody to view on BidNet. And we have contractors that are a member of BidNet, so as soon as it's posted, they get a notification of what the project is, what it entails, and they can go pull the plans and specs and everything. Other contractors choose not to be a member, but they, they'll assign a, we've seen this a lot, especially with smaller companies, they'll assign a staff person to go check BidNet every week. So we try to always make sure that when we advertise, we overlap at least a week, because you'll have somebody that only checks it weekly, and you want them to be able to pick that advertisement up. And then, for all construction projects, we have a pre-qualification portion of the bid that has to be submitted with the bid. So if it's, you know, if it's not a major project, you know, we'll say somewhere between $500,000, which is the formal level for the state of North Carolina. So for a $500,000 bid, you're required to advertise it for a minimum of seven days. You have to have a minimum of three bidders. And then you follow all of the minority business participation. For a project from $500,000 to, you know, a million, maybe a little bit more than that, we would probably use the pre-qualification package as part of the bid package, which means when that bidder submits, they fill out all of the pre-qualification information, which includes financial information, you know, to show that the company is able to carry that size of a project. And then it gets submitted along with the minority business requirements and any other federal requirements with the bid, and we review it all as one package. And then it comes to city council for award. For a project, and we haven't had this discussion yet, but taking from what Dr. Woodruff just said, you know, on a project the size of Jack Emmett where you're getting closer to $5 million, one of the options we have is actually to advertise it for 30 days. We advertise the project, but we don't ask for bids. What we ask for is a qualification statement. And it's basically the same thing I just said. It shows that the company has done similar work. They have to provide references. They have to provide all of their financial information. And then once you get that information, you review it, and you select those bidders that are qualified. And then you send out the advertisement for the construction contract to only those bidders you've selected. We use that project, process for the Center for Public Safety very successfully. I want to say we had that one narrowed down to seven bidders, if I remember correctly. And then, if I remember correctly, there was one that decided not to bid at the last minute. I think it was because of workload. But we had, you know, almost everybody that were pre-qualified to actually bid that project.
And I will tell you, from a construction standpoint, Mr. Warden really knows this, you don't put together bids just by, you know, plugging in some numbers in a computer, and 30 minutes later, you got your bid. It takes literally, you know, thousands of dollars to prepare a bid. So on larger projects, companies like the pre-qualification. Why? Because practically everybody has their pre-qualifications on the shelf, and within an hour or two, you can pull them off the shelf and get it submitted. And that way, if you turn out that you're not gonna be qualified, you haven't wasted tens of thousands of dollars of your company's hard-earned money on a project you're not gonna be qualified for. So I would tell you, the industry likes pre-qualification on large projects. Mr. Warden, would you agree with that?
Yes, yes, on those larger projects, yes, sir.
Now, if you don't mind, let's talk about a larger project for just a minute before we get back to any questions you have. Look at page 19. Down towards the bottom, you have the Parkwood Regional PS Pump Station and Western Trunk Sewer Line. That is built into your rate system and built into your budget. And as you know, we're out there right now getting very close to sending out some bids. We got some very good financial news the other day from Gail, in that, as you know, you authorized us to go out and refinance. And she received a bid of 1.1%?
I don't remember the exact number.
Whatever it was, it was low. We didn't extend the life of those bonds. We kept them the same length. And we're gonna save the ratepayers over a million dollars in the 10 years that are left simply by refinancing. That's why it's important to have a, and we all really appreciate Gail for many reasons. One reason I appreciate her is because she says to me, no, on a regular basis, can't spend that money. But that's why it's important to have someone who really stays on top of the finances of the city. It would have been very easy for her to say, well, you know, we've just finished the CAFR, and we got all this budget work coming up. We're, you know, we're at 2.5% interest. It's not gonna get any lower. It takes a lot of work to go into a refinancing package. And she's to be commended, and her staff's to be commended. It's gonna save our ratepayers over a million dollars. And it is spread over 10 years. It's still public money. Coming back to this project, in the latest, Ron, what are the initials?
In the A R B.
Which stands for what?
The American Rescue Plan.
Okay. The city is gonna receive $9.3 million. And that is eligible for water, sewer, or broadband construction. Well, we're not in the broadband business here. So we have already sent you a notice that we're moving forward and plan on paying $9 million of this $38 million project by using federal money. Now, if you think about it, in simple math, not in Mr. Thomas's exact math or Gail's CPA math, but in my simple math, that means a fourth of that project, 25% of that project, is gonna now be paid by the federal government. There aren't a lot of silver linings around COVID. I will tell you, in this particular case, to every citizen who pays a water or sewer bill, you've had a terrible experience with COVID. But at least this is a little bit of a silver lining, because it is going to pay roughly 25% of that project. Going back, any other questions that you have on the way the book is put together? Or any questions about what you'd like for us to add?
Well, I did have a question. I'm so glad you brought that up, because I've been thinking about that $9.3 million. Has that been put into our rate model? I mean, we've got this 2.25% annual increase that we do every year anyway. It doesn't sound like much, but you, time goes so fast. You know, here in 10 years, we're up 22.5% on our rates. Have we plugged that in to see if we could give some relief on this 2.25% or?
We're working on updating it right now.
Okay. I thought she would have been, but I wanted to make sure.
I was hoping y'all were gonna come back at part of the further budget discussions and talk about the rate model, and we examine that. I felt like you would. But I did have a question like Randy. That was, thank you, Randy.
Excellent job by staff. A lot of work. Randa, first time for you. Well done. Mayor, do you mind if we take a five-minute break?
Let's take about five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'd like to begin some of the discussions regarding your budget. I know you spent the last hour talking about capital improvements. Now, we're gonna actually talk about the operating budget. I'm gonna ask Gail to walk you through some of these slides, so please, if you would.
Some of this first informational, really familiar from last week. It's, the general fund revenues are summarized here. As you can see, our ad valorem taxes, which is our property taxes, and the sales tax are our two largest sources of revenue, and there's really not much change from FY21 to FY22.
Now, let's take a moment to dwell on that. You know, we begin the budget process because you always tell us you do not want to raise taxes. I'm not recommending at all you raise taxes this year. What you will find is that in a lot of the department issues, whether it's for additional police, fire, other, 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 you know, where does that money come from? It either comes from new revenue, new taxes, or it comes from your reserves. I want to focus on those first two numbers up there. Simple math tells me that ad valorem taxes went up, the revenue from ad valorem taxes went up $70,000. That is all. I'm gonna say it again. It went up only $70,000. Look at the next line, sales tax. Simple math, again, $379,000. So you combine 70 and 370, you're up to 440. We're dealing with less than a half million dollars' worth of new revenue. When you get later, not tonight, but when you get into a lot of the department issues, you're going to hear me as the manager say, I don't recommend it. I don't recommend it. I don't recommend it. Not because the city wouldn't benefit from it, but where is the revenue gonna come from? It's like anything else in life. You know, if I want something, I have to be able to pay for it. So, again, we're in a position now where financially, the city is going to start growing again with new subdivisions. But that's not where we find ourselves this year. So please.
And again, I'll mention the charges for services is down a little because of the recreation fees, the programs we're not running, and then the passports. We're not anticipating to start that up till January, so those fees are down. And then we show borrowing, and then the fund balance is the big story here. We started out FY21 with $2.2 million to balance the budget, and we're at 4.1 now. And I had a question earlier about where, how do we get from the 2.2 to $8 million? Well, that's $3.5 million for Jack Emmett, a million dollars for paving. Those were all appropriated fund balance items. And then we have other miscellaneous revenues. And then here's a history of our unassigned fund balance. It's grown over the years, not quite so much from 19 to 20. And 21, that estimate just assumes that we'll break even, that we won't spend any, and we won't add any. I think we may spend some, but it's a little too early to tell that for sure.
But now, for the budget that is proposed, have you already removed the necessary Jack Emmett money from the $26.8 million number?
No, because we don't know for sure where that's gonna end up.
Yes. And that's why I point that out. I actually knew the answer to that before I asked the question. The attorney's told me years ago.
He always does.
I don't ever ask a question you don't know the answer to. And that's why, let's assume for the moment that at the end of FY21, when it's audited, that we do end with a fund balance of 26.8. And let's assume that you do take, borrow the money for Jack Emmett, and we're very fortunate, and let's say that it's 3.5 million. That means that your general fund balance is gonna be $23.3 million. Also, remember the previous slide. We're balancing this budget by taking $4.1 million out of the savings account. So, Gail, does the 23.3 number now go further down?
Yes.
Okay. You're getting down to $19 million. That's not a trend that we want to keep. Please.
And this next slide just depicts, it's in your budget book, the city services that can be funded only with property taxes. And if you take our total property tax budget, it's $23 million, 23.8 million. And that's only enough money to cover police and 90% of fire, not even all of fire, with just the property tax revenue. And then we have a pie chart that just shows you, you know, 69% of the property tax goes to police and 30% goes to fire. And this one, do you want to talk about the positions?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. A lot of your decision packages are either gonna be hard or they're gonna be easy. You will notice at the top line, we have the budgeted positions and the proposed positions. So currently, you have 572 full-time. We're proposing 569. And at a point, we'll explain what happened there. Part-time benefited are five, stays at five. And the part-time non-benefited, you'll recall, that's where we brought in-house all of the summer workers, a lot of the parks and recreation folks. Look at the bottom line, positions added, requested. Now, these are not in the budget. The ones on the left are, I'm sorry, the ones on the right aren't. If you've noticed, there are 24 full-time positions and five part-time non-benefited positions that people have asked for. The only way any of those people get funded is either by touching your reserves or by finding a different funding source. Different funding source could be water and sewer funds, could be sanitation funds, could be commercial garbage funds. It could be even DOT funds for the Jacksonville Station.
It starts right on. You're gonna do this, or you want me to do it for you?
That's, well, I was gonna introduce it, and now it's gonna let you do it. Okay. The next series of slides will begin to get into the departments. And you will notice the way we've set it up. For example, the mayor and council, you can find in your budget book, page 26, you'll find the mayor and council's budget. And then you'll notice that in this case, your overall expenses are almost identical in the budget. Why is that? Well, number one, your salaries are all locked in by ordinances. The expenses that you have are almost identical year after year. On the other hand, when it comes to elections, you will see that we had $10,000 in the FY21 budget. And the reason why was we thought we were gonna be spending some money on the census and on redistricting. Well, it's pretty obvious from what John has reported to you before. I'm not sure any of that's gonna happen during this fiscal year. So in the FY22 year, we are assuming that we are gonna do redistricting and that we are going to hold an election. We've put in $55,000. Why? Well, we're assuming that we're gonna have to pay part of that election. If, on the other hand, we're able to piggyback that election at the same time that they're having county commission or other elections, that cost may go down. But the city clerk has recommended $55,000 in that. So now that you see how this is set up, we can, if you're comfortable, we can begin to go through the departments. We'll ask. We'll ask, do you have any questions about any of the expenditures? And you can begin by page 26, which is the mayor and council's budget. I won't go through a lot of detail unless you have some questions. You can see the revenue sources, you can see the expenditures, and you can see the bottom line. Any questions on the mayor and council's budget? Page 29 is elections. We've just been through that. Any questions on that?
I guess we're still here in November. I mean, 2022, is that, no change, you haven't heard any changes on municipal elections?
It's still up in the air at this point in time. We're still hoping and expecting some clarity will be given by the legislature. I've had several conversations with Senator Lozera. He knows our concerns, and he is working on it. It's the last conversation that I had with him.
Now, the attorney on page 33, the attorney has asked for 15 minutes to review each of the line items in his budget. Do you want to grant him those 15 minutes?
There is one hypo up there. I don't know exactly what fiscal year '22 is with a 5175, but I'll take it.
That's an extra 50 cents. The .50 did not get in there, so, okay. Page 37 is the city manager's budget. Any questions there? Do I have, you have the clicker? Okay. Page 41, passports. Normally, we do almost 5,000 applications a year. Because of COVID, none. Normally, we collect about $200,000. Because of COVID, none. We have been talking to the passport agents about possibly reopening for appointments only. They are in favor of that. We are working out the details. Whether we will actually open before the end of this fiscal year is still to be seen. And even if we do open, it will be appointments only. And with that, you're probably talking about only doing maybe 2,000 a year, not 5,000 a year, but at least we'll begin to help our citizens on that. Page 45 is transportation planning. If you'll notice on page 46, transportation planning is funded by a whole lot of different sources. And you can see the grants that come from the federal and state level. Ron and Anthony and Gail work very detailed. All I know is they provide the money. So if you have any questions about what the different grants are, I'm sure one of them One of the things that we are doing, if you look on page 47 at budget note, comment number five, we are moving a lot of the contracted services and going to be moving those into a new position that the MPO is recommending. So there'll be only a minor cost to the city on that because the MPO, through its various funding sources of federal and state, will be picking up the majority of that. Now, Ron, do you, I know, Mr. Warden, you're on the MPO. Who else is on the MPO? Mr. Thomas, do y'all have any comments you want to make about that budget note? Okay.
Very, as you mentioned, very minor impact to the city, the city general fund.
Page 65 is the city clerk, I'm sorry, is human resources. I can't even read tonight. So, human resources, page 65. It looks like a substantial increase. Actually, what happened there is we transferred an employee. If you'll remember, when we moved all of the part-time people from the temp agencies, we also agreed that we would give HR an additional employee, and that occurred well back in this year, so it's been very successful. On page 69, Rose, would you please cover the city clerks? You didn't give Rose a chance to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back.
On page 71 in the city clerk, one of the things that I will be recommending to you is that we move the admin assistant from a part-time to a full-time. That is because with the loss of the assistant manager, all of those duties that had to do with PowerPoint presentations and preparation, we're not filling that position. We're not expanding the four people who are in media. We're keeping that number at four. Each of those people are picking up additional responsibilities. They're being trained. They're doing an excellent job. They're good young professionals. In Carmen's area, she is going to pick up more work on making sure that all the PowerPoints and everything that Glenn always came in on Saturdays and Sundays and spent dozens of hours on every month, those are going to be moving to Carmen and her staff. So we'll be recommending that you move from a part-time to a full-time person there. But that's not a decision you're asked to make tonight. Finance, Gail is on page 73. Now, finance includes top, bottom, and all around. What does that mean? Her staff of 24 people includes all of the people upstairs who take care of the budget and the audit. It includes all the accounting people downstairs. It includes all of the water and sewer utility billing people. It's a big, big operation. And you can see that in that operation, she's not even giving herself any more money. It's down by $17,000. Did you want to make additional comments on that? On page 85 is non-departmental. Now, I know that there are budgets in between here, and at any time, just speak, please. On the general fund, non-departmental, look at the budget notes. First of all, the city has now made 10 of the 20 payments on the Sturgeon City Building. That's pretty amazing. I mean, I can remember the days when you, as a council, labored over what you were going to do and how you were going to fund it, and we're now, you know, 10 of the 20 payments. So the good news is you only have 10 payments left, and then that debt will be off your books. Look at the next note. The city pays utilities for the Sturgeon City Building but is reimbursed by Sturgeon City for their use. Why is that? The way the metering is set up, remember, we have some buildings down there we use, and they have some buildings they use. And instead of replumbing the whole place, we simply split the bill. We pay it up front, they reimburse. Also, note number three. Payment to Onslow County for the 800 megahertz system are for 10 years. The city has made five years of interest-only payments. Those were low. Now, remember, the county's the one who decided how they were going to fund this. So they set up heavy on the back, light on the front. I can understand why they did that. But now, we're in the heavy on the back. So in FY21 and in FY22, we are making very large payments. And remember, you agreed that we would take this $642,000 or its equivalent for FY21 out of the Force and Initiative, and we're doing the same thing in FY22. Fortunately, it then begins to drop off where the payment in FY23 drops by over $300,000. But that's where these type payments are placed. They're placed in your non-departmental general fund. Look at note four. This is where the city also pays the $100,000 a year towards the Dick's Crisis Center. Number five, and by the way, Mr. Jackson has joined that committee, doing an excellent job participating. We have another meeting coming up, I believe it's a week from tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. But that center is busy. Unfortunately, it is very busy. It is really making a difference. Look at note number five. The city has increased their annual contribution to Joe Ed. We normally support $30,000 a year. You have agreed to a five-year pledge of an additional $30,000, so this will be the second payment of your five. An interesting note, six. Non-departmental accounts for the 50 part-time, non-benefited positions used for the temporary pool. Why is that? Well, while we can tell you that some of the year, those people go to Parks and Recreation, some of the year, those people go elsewhere. We only have 50 positions. So rather than having them assigned to a department, they are assigned to non-department, and we, if I may use the term, we shuffle them out to whichever department needs them during the time of the year they need them. But at all times, the number one place is Parks and Recreation.
Dr. Woodruff?
Yes, ma'am.
I have just one question. For those part-time, non-benefited individuals, if one of those employees happens to be injured on the job, are we required by law for workman's comp with OSHA regulations for those employees? Yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, non-benefited means they don't get vacation or sick leave, and they don't get retirement.
Okay.
But yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
If one of our weed eaters, if one of our people running the weed eaters out there, and they get injured on the job, we pay worker's comp for them. Line seven, this budget continues to include $300,000 for market-related wage adjustments. This is not cost of living. I will say to you that in FY21, because we had no idea what the COVID was going to do to us financially, we did use this $300,000 to cover the cost of living increase. We made only nominal wage adjustments because the $300,000 was almost completely eaten up with that. This is about wage adjustments. Okay, what's a wage adjustment? Let's say for discussion purposes that you have a person in finance who leaves us and goes someplace else. And let's say they were making $40,000. The person we hire in, best qualified candidate, but the lowest we can get them in the door is $42,000. Well, what we do is we adjust anyone who's in their comparable job. Let's say they were making 41, the previous, you know, the person who left us was making 40, the person who's still with us was making 41. You're going to bring a new employee in at 42 over a person who's been with you three or four years? No. That's how we do wage adjustments. And then, number eight, with the deletion of community programs, that was a department unto itself. The Sturgeon City Institute contribution and the transportation for student leadership development has been moved to non-departmental budget. Had to go someplace. But in the old days, meaning last year, you may recall that in Glenn's area, we had three different budgets. We don't have three different budgets anymore. Was it two? Anyway, I think it was three. Whichever it was, two or three. We only have a media budget now. We don't need to have his responsibilities broken up in three different budgets. But you've got to put the expenditures someplace. So when you do look at the expenditures in non-departmental, it went up $200,000. A lot of that has to do with either things that we cannot control, such as utilities, or things that have been moved where they used to be in a different department, that department's now been eliminated. Gail, can you help explain any of that further?
No, sir, you did a fine job.
Okay, you're sure. Okay. Just a couple of more, planning and permitting. We're purposely skipping over police and so forth. Those will be major topics that we'll be discussing starting a week away.
What page are you on, sir?
Page 105.
Thank you.
When you look at this budget, it certainly went down. Why is that? Well, in restructuring the department, in the past, Kelly Gruganis, who was the plans administrator or plans supervisor, was charged to Ryan's account. The state law says that all building permit fees must go directly to building permit services. So, for example, if we have a great fee year, we can't take $50,000 and pay Parks and Recreation. So for clarity of accounting, we have moved Kelly, because his full-time job is reviewing building plans. We have actually moved him into the building inspection department. Other than that, you know, Ryan's budget really hasn't changed. It's just when you look at that $100,000 reduction, you know, it's not just his salary. Remember this, for every dollar we pay an employee, it costs us an extra 35 to 38 cents for benefits. So you have an employee who's making whatever he's making, and then you add 35 to 36% on top of that, you can see how the numbers ratchet up. But you can see all of the notes that are there. In the interest of time, I'm going to skip a couple of these, and we will, the last one I'd like to cover tonight, unless you would like to cover others, or two. Go back one, if you don't mind. Tourism Development Authority. On the 29th of April, the TDA will be holding a quick public hearing, and they will be adopting their budget. Your role is in adopting this part of their budget. We're not asking you to adopt it tonight, but what you see here is the occupancy tax proposed, the occupancy tax that is to be expended. What the TDA will do is decide how that money gets expended. Your role is strictly to put this in the budget. It's their role to actually adopt how it is to be expended. And by law, one-third has to go to promotions, and two-thirds can go to tourism-related expenditures. Now, we have two members of the TDA here. Y'all want to add anything on that yet? Okay. Next one, please.
Okay, the health insurance.
Yes, the health insurance. Two years ago, we asked to pass on a 15% rate increase, and last year, we asked to pass on a 25% rate increase. Simple math says exactly what Dr. Washington just did. I believe she went, phew. Okay. The good news is this year, because of many factors, some of which we really won't be able to discuss in public, we are recommending only a 3% increase. Now, let's look at what 3% actually does. For the general fund, that's $115,000. For water and sewer, $21,000, and so forth. We are asking you tonight to take a straw vote that will be binding on passing on the health insurance at 3%. Why are we asking that? It's halfway It's halfway through April. We have to go through a lengthy process of notifying employees, coming up with new rates. Let me do it reverse. Coming up with all the new rates, notifying employees, going through the re-registration process. We cannot wait until the middle of May or June for this decision. So we are asking for you tonight to approve and agree that the rate increase for the health insurance premiums, every plan, that means the city's participation goes up 3% for every premium, every employee's premiums go up 3%, whether it's family coverage, dependent coverage, whatever. So, Gail, can you explain that any further? Need any further explanation?
I don't think so. Will the deductibles for their plans remain the same?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just that their participation is just going to go up 3%.
For Mr. Sosa's benefit, over the last five years, we have modified that plan to the point where if we continue to modify it, it really won't have much value to the employees. I mean, the deductibles have gotten higher and higher and higher. We've eliminated one full plan. It's about as skinny as you can get it and have it have a benefit to your employees. I will also tell you that after the 25% rate increase this past year, we had a number of employees who simply dropped it. They said, I have other bills to pay. I can't afford health insurance anymore. But this year, at least, we're looking at a 3%. So sometime before we end tonight, we are asking you to give us a straw but binding vote on a 3% increase.
How are we doing as far as, you know, participation in certain things like the phone-a-doc or dial-a-doc and less emergency room visits and that sort of thing? Is that improved?
Very much so. The phone-a-doc program, which is technically called the Healthiest U, and the reason why we have to be careful is now there is a program called phone-a-doc. But the Healthiest U program is something that the employees have really utilized. And it has substantially reduced emergency room visits. Why is that? Any time of the day or night, you can pick up the phone from anywhere in the country, and you dial our Healthiest U program. And you get a real medical doctor licensed in North Carolina. There is no co-pay. Whereas if you went to the emergency room, there would be. Or if you went to your own doctor, there would be. There's no co-pay. We pay, I think it's $5.86 or some number close to that per employee per month. That way, whether you use it or not, you pay it. And so far this year, I think the number is like $150,000 worth of savings that we have had. That far offsets the cost. I will also say this, remember, we have 900 and something members in our health plan. 400 and something of them are city employees. We only pay the $5.86 on city employees. So for example, I'll use myself. A month ago, my wife got an eye infection. Sunday night, 9 o'clock, she says, well, I guess I'm going to go to the doctor tomorrow. I said, why don't you pick up the phone and dial, you know, Healthiest U? Okay, so she did. Dialled it up. 10 minutes later, medical doctor's on. He does an amazing video chat with her. He looks at her eyes, and he said, well, this is what you need to do. Nobody had to go to the emergency room. Nobody had to go sit in the doctor's office. Nobody had to pay a co-pay. It works. And we can show you that our employees heavily utilize that.
You want to vote on it now? I mean, why not, while we're talking about it?
That's good. I guess it needs to be in the form of a motion, correct?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we approve a 3% increase in premiums for our health plan.
Any further discussion, council? All those in favor, stick a five for CNN.
Aye.
All opposed?
Those are the things we'd like to cover with you tonight. What we would like for you to do, though, is go back through the book. There are many pages we didn't touch. We're really going to get into some of the heavier discussions a week away with police department and fire and some of those. Any follow-up questions you have tonight? We'll be happy to stay and answer.
Thank you, and thank you to your staff for the presentations. The motion to adjourn. Favor? Anybody opposed?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.